Michelle. Do you want to sign? Hello. We're getting ready to start the meeting for November the 30th, 2020. But one of the things, we will be recording live and we will be recording tonight. So I just want to let everybody know that it will be televised. We will be working out the schedule with GCTV. But we're also going as far as doing the FaceTime Live. Will we do our Facebook Live? Excuse me, the girls are getting like it's whatever. We will be doing notes or records from this point on. But there may be some pain. So we're going to go ahead and I was sworn in by Dwight Mingle as the mayor on November the 19th, 2020. So I went on to go ahead and we're going to start with, I'm going to swear in my counsel, one at a time. Whoever wants to come first. And we're going to use Jessica Babler's grandmother's property. She's going, right? Everybody turn off their phones. Okay, if you want to come over here, please, and then put your hand on the mic. Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. That I will perform with fidelity the duties of the office. I will perform with fidelity the duties of the office. To which I have been elected. To which I've been elected. And to which I am about to assume. And to which I'm about to assume. I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of Tennessee. I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of Tennessee. And of the United States. And of the United States. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform the duties. Of the office of Alderman. Of the office of Alderman. For the town of Montegoat. So help me God. For the town of Montegoat. So help me God. On this day, the 30th of November, 2020, who has sworn in as an Alderman of Montegoat. Thank you, Jessica. And I need to get the time to sign and then I'll sign. And then we'll just carry on without it during this start of meeting. Yeah, I'll get you to know where I stand. So I'm going to give this man a shout out again. Make sure, repeat after me, please, sir. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity the duties.
That I will perform with fidelity the duties.
Of the office which I have been elected.
Of the office which I have been elected.
And which I'm about to assume.
And which I'm about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of Tennessee.
To support the Constitution of Tennessee.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Alderman.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Alderman.
For the town of Montegoat.
For the town of Montegoat.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And now sworn in as an Alderman. You'll sign there and I'll sign. And Debbie will know the rest, of course. We'll send the airway. Okay. Jessica. Okay, we'll do it like this as they work. Okay. Repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. That I will perform with fidelity the duties. I will support or will perform fidelity the duties. Of the office which I have been elected. Of the office in which I've been elected. And which I'm about to assume. And which I'm about to assume. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. To support the Constitution of Tennessee. To support the Constitution of Uni- yeah. Of Tennessee. Tennessee and the United States. And the United States. I do solemnly swear. I solemnly swear. That I will faithfully perform the duties. I will faithfully perform the duties. Of the office of Alderman. Of the office of the Alderman. For the town of Montegoat. For the town of Montegoat. So help me God. So help me God. Okay. Repeat after me, please, ma'am. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. That I will perform with fidelity the duties. That I will perform with fidelity the duties. Of the office which I have been elected. Which I'm about to assume. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. To support the Constitution of Tennessee. To support the Constitution of Tennessee. And of the United States. And of the United States. I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully perform. That I will faithfully perform. The duties of the office of Alderman. The duties of the office of Alderman. For the town of Montegoat. For the town of Montegoat. So help me God. So help me God. Anybody else want to, will sign your document, please? The next thing we're going to do is begin with prayer. And I have asked my pastor and another pastor to be here to walk up and of course to do our prayer, to pray over the council and over the town of Montegoat as we begin our duties before we start. And y'all can stand or y'all can stand your weapon too. Just every y'all that will read. I'll give it to y'all.
Thank you for being here. Just have a couple of things quick to say. I appreciate my longtime mentor, Pat, for joining me from Northern Virginia. Appreciate Mayor Rodman for asking us to attend. Marilyn Ron and her husband, last seven years, I've got to watch a lot of good positive growth. But certain desire to grow as a person in Marilyn and to develop positively in all areas of the life she's committed to. And I just appreciate that from a personal perspective. Matthew 20:26 says, "Whoever wishes to become great among you shall be your servant." Each of you have shown a desire to lead Marilyn and this board, and I think that's a wonderful thing. And I want to challenge Marilyn as well as the board not to forget the importance of serving. This is not an opportunity to serve our own interests, but a wonderful opportunity to serve the people that have elected them, common interest that really helps and benefits everyone. Proverbs 11:14 says, "Where there is no guidance, the people follow; but in abundance of counselors there is victory." God can guide us to many things that we can accomplish. It would be good of everybody who may agree with that. I appreciate, and appreciate this opportunity. And I'm going to ask my longtime mentor, Pat, if he would comment and say a prayer.
All right. Sorry to make you all stand while we do this, but I have a few short comments I want to make. It's such an honor to be here. I drove down from near Washington DC, the place where I live, in the upper Shannon Door Valley, just to be here. My friend Marilyn Rodman asked me to be here. And God bless all of you. I'm so thankful to see us making our pledges on the Bible. If you're a Bible reader, you will have noticed that in the Old Testament particularly, we have the long, near 2,000 year history of Israel in the Old Testament, which is not only the history of moral successes and failures, but also a history of political struggles within that nation and other nations. Difficult decisions, both moral and ethical, had to be made by kings, judges, prophets, and other leaders. The wise men that you referred to, that Solomon spoke of, that advised kings and leaders. Priests who advised prophets, prophets who counseled kings. We see this throughout the Bible. David being mentored by Samuel, the prophet. Solomon, the king, being mentored by several great men that were spiritual. And the last good king of Israel, Josiah. When the prophet Jeremiah was a young man, God spoke to him and said, "Your calling and your ministry will be to pull down, to pluck up, to destroy." What he was referring to were all the immorals that had taken over Israel during his time. How could Jeremiah, a relatively unknown prophet, do that? He did it by mentoring the young king Josiah. And through Josiah, who was the civic or magisterial force, Jeremiah was able to mentor him. They worked hand in hand. And Jeremiah taught the pulling down of wickedness, the uprooting of ungodliness, and the moral and ethical decisions that had to be made. And Josiah carried those out with civic authority. I'm glad that Mayor Rodman is a churchgoer. I'm glad that so many of you, I see you Aldermen coming into office swearing on the Bible and pledging. I see many of you nodding when scriptures are quoted here tonight and such things are done. I rejoice that in a city such as this one, we have believers in God who look not only for God's guidance, but also for God's help. And I thank God for pastors like Roy Wood, who helps to counsel and mentor, a great woman like Marilyn Rodman, and so many great people like you as you navigate through decisions that are not only economical, but also decisions that are far reaching in, as I repeat, moral and ethical grounds that will affect future generations in these nearby counties and in this city. So let us pray. Father God, in Jesus' name, we ask you to put your hand upon this administration for this city. We ask you to blow your breath into it. We ask you to nudge and guide opposing forces, conflicting ideas, through the wisdom of God. We ask you to pour your wisdom upon this mayor and her counsel and upon all other civic officials that have to speak and perhaps sometimes counter and argue with points that are being made. In all of it, God, guide and find your middle ground of the greatest wisdom. Help us, oh Lord, in America. Help us in Tennessee. And help us, Lord, in Montegoat. Bless us to do this work for our time. In Jesus' name, amen.
Let Jessica get in here. Joey. Joey Babler. Joey's a veteran and we've asked him to do the pledge tonight, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is this one, yeah, this one's on too. We'll have to share the microphone tonight. Okay, folks, if you need it. Okay. Okay, we have minutes from the last meeting, but they're wanting their minutes, so we really can't approve those. So we're just going to pass on that one, okay? And first, we're going to start with committee reports. We'll start out with police department. You do have a report in your packet. Jack. Well, you've got your own microphone down here. Well, the council hasn't had a chance to look at it, so if you don't mind, if you'll read through it.
Is his mic on?
Is your mic on, Jack? Yeah, he's got a mask on. Yeah, they both got a clock in. We have, do you care just to read through what you've got as far as what's filled in and it's the timeframe?
The three victims in Washington, Minnesota, three people arrested. One single assault, one domestic assault, three vandalism, four burglaries, perhaps a pick and knock, because they picked up around this time of year. One drug related, number trespass, and we have had nine accidents and there's plenty of citations that have been given so far.
You can see on the bottom here of the fines and the amount collected.
The total collected on the fines is $2,240.25. That's all I have to add up now. We did have a robbery last night at the circle K. There was a black male that entered the circle K while the attendant was taking out trash. He was in the store for some time and attended that audit. And he actually held an attendant gunpoint. Investigation is still ongoing.
Okay.
It was at 1:00 this morning.
Jack, under miles per ton, I see that, is that something y'all track or have just heard?
We pretty much, we just put roughly, it varies so much. Most of the time it's fifty miles an hour on the vehicles. Sometimes it's upwards, it just depends on how many miles a car was on the night.
So two guys on, fifty, to the hundred miles.
Yeah, it's a hundred miles and sometimes it's more, sometimes it's upwards around a hundred fifty or a hundred. It just depends on how different the night is.
Does anyone just have anything for the chief? Before you step down, I did get a message today, and I was going to, it's a very long message, but I want to read it to the council. It didn't come until later. And it was actually one of the businesses, it was from Mrs. Northcutt that works for Jerry Don. Can you get my microphone? Yes, sorry. Might have to hold it and read at the same time. Okay. It was from Mrs. Northcutt that works for Jerry Don Thomas.
CDC.
Yes. And she said that, she said, "I just want to send out a word of praise on the police department. A lot of folks, people, a lot of times people don't realize that they're needed or wanted." But she said, "We've had the chief and people call us, come into our businesses and let us know that we are important and to check on us." She says, "I just want to give a shout out because it is important that we matter as businesses and that you're acknowledged doing that." So just wanted to let you know that hats off that people are saying. And of course, we'll be talking about later, but then tomorrow, we're going to meet with you all about the parade and the extra things we're doing to be CDC safe, you know, during this time.
I want to send a shout out to my guys, so that everybody did a little hard work.
Yeah, well, it didn't come in till late or, you know, would have sent it to you and came in on my personal messenger or so, but I wanted to make sure that y'all knew it.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure if that...
You're welcome. Nobody else, anyone for that? All right, next, we'll have the fire department. We have the fire chief that's out there. Does everybody have his report?
Yeah, I've got the light on top of everybody's.
All right.
We had a total of 16 calls this month. One lip CS, three brush fires, six vehicle fires, two LZs, one neutral, three wrecks with injuries. That's a total of 16 calls. We also have training starting January after the holidays to last through August to get everybody state certified and certified in seven different courses. And that way, everybody be up to date on everything and ready to go.
Does anyone have?
People's running good?
Yes.
All right. Nate, do you have any questions? Don't worry.
No, not right now.
Jessica, do you have, Jessica, Jessica B., do you have any more? We have two Jessicas now.
Would you say paid calls, does that mean you're getting reimbursed from the insurance company for those calls?
It depends on what we use. Like, if we use any of our materials, we can turn them into insurance companies.
So it's only materials, you're not refunded on a per-call basis?
Well, this paid calls, well, I just got to pour it, but yeah, we get $15 per call. So that just goes on there as paid calls.
That's what they get paid.
The fire number pays. I got you. Not that the town was paid for the service provided.
But now, Garrett, you still have the process that there are certain calls, I don't know why I'm getting feedback, but there's certain calls, it may be mine, that we do get paid for that, right? They're turned into the insurance?
Yes.
And they're collected for us?
Yes.
Like it used to be? Is that still done through a company?
I'm not sure. We haven't used one in a while.
Yeah. Okay.
The fire chief usually just sends a letter.
Okay.
To the insurance company.
How's that working as far as getting paid from the insurance companies?
So far, we haven't had to use any of our stuff or somebody in there.
Okay. So.
So are you talking about if we have a fire on the interstate, a truck fire, do you bill that trucking company for it?
Yes, for, because we use phone to put on the fire, we'll bill the on the selling by board.
You don't bill them for your time, you just bill them?
Just from the tree.
And that also happens with house fires, doesn't it?
Yeah, it can happen.
Yeah, because a lot of insurance policies have it built in. They pay so much back to the fire department so they can bill for that. Or they used to, could.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have? Of course, we'll be seeing you again, thank you again, but we'll be seeing you tomorrow so we can have you guys there for this weekend, too. Uh, yeah, thank you. Okay. 911, is Wanda here?
Yeah.
Okay, Fluff's not here. You do have, I think, a report in your package. No, no report. Okay. All right. Then we're not going to do, I think, we'll do an activities report later because we're not really doing parks and wrecks. Utility manager, Mr. Contra. Yep, we got it. If you gave us one, we got it. Well, then we don't have it, so you're here to report for us.
Well, we just doing a lot of Christmas stuff and I've got the guy left at the water plant there doing some painting inside and everything. Getting it a little better from state. We've got an interstate coming up on the wet well, I think next week, unless they cancel the two water tanks from the wet well out to the water plant. We'll see how that goes back, what they found on the water tanks.
She's going to check your microphone. I think we're getting some feedback on it. I think it's that one.
Somebody have a hearing aid?
No, I don't think so. We're going to buy a sound system tonight. We have one on loan, so I apologize, but at least maybe you can hear us better than what you did in the past, you know, because we said we would have a sound system as well. So, but when we get out, we're just hopefully we won't have that much feedback. This is the first time we use it. One of the things that is, well, open tonight is the bidding on the backhoe. Do you want to explain why we need a backhoe and it'll come out utilities, which we have the funding for it? And then we do have a bid open on that tonight if we want to act upon it.
We've had two for a long time and the oldest one, we had the transmission rebuilt about six years ago, I think. And it was about, I think, about $6,000, about $6,000, just two-wheel drive. And give me some bids on another four-wheel drive. So if we're out, just say we're out Campbell Woods or somewhere with our backhoe and we have to come in, get gravel, or if we have another leak, the other guy can take another guy and go to whatever leak we got instead of being bound up with one backhoe. It just, they're just handy. We use it down to sort of plant, just different thing. And this one, I'm getting beds on, on the front bucket. I've got them to go ahead and include a clamp, what's called a clamp bucket. So like when people piles a brush out there, take, pick that brush up and then put it in the bucket. Don't have to pick it up in the hand, run it up and down, roll it in the bucket, try and scoop it up. I mean, just pick it up. But it's a needy thing and we got money and a utility budget. And there's just the other ones, me and Keith talked about it, we just don't see trying to fix it.
Will we surplus that out? I know we talked about that. You will to trade in on it? So that was part of the bid?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's part of it.
And there are three bids here tonight if we want to open those and approve the process of the backhoe.
Do those three bids include the trade-in value?
Yeah.
So it's net?
Yeah.
Yeah. So do you want Debbie to go ahead and open them and we can look at those? I mean, that's, what do y'all want to do?
That's it.
Okay. I have to hold the microphone.
You want to open?
You go ahead and tell her it is and just hear Deb. I'll let you.
The first one is from Contractors Machinery. Okay, this is for a new case, 580, some of the backhoe, and it is $115,000.
Okay, I'll just have it handed in. All right, here's the first one.
The second one is from Contractors Machinery, Tri-Cities in Kingsport, Tennessee.
And then John will hand them to you, let you look over them, too, if they're. And Butler, too, if he wants to look at them, because y'all both used this, but Debbie gets a...
It's a trade-in.
This one is for a new case, 580, with a trade-in. It's $115,433.
So there's that one.
And this is a new case, 580, and it's $79,000.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, and we'll pass that down and let John and Butler both review those, but there's quite a bit of difference in the pricing there, so. Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, because this is...
But at least we got three of them. And you can look and see if they're comparable whenever they get finished with them.
Are these two companies the same company?
No.
No.
Contractors Machinery, Contractors Machinery, they have the same name. We're not franchised as the same company?
No, they're different companies.
Okay. But this one's out of Louisville, Tennessee, and that one's out of Kingsport.
Check the addresses on this, have different. I mean, is it totally?
Well, they both say Contractors Machinery, Inc. That one says Contractors Tri-Cities, Inc., so it's a different.
Yeah.
Quite a big difference in price.
I'd have to really sit down and study them side by side. We already tell.
The other two don't have a warranty. I didn't see a warranty on them. Did y'all see a warranty?
Oh, which ones?
These two.
The $115,000 ones.
Okay, this one's a one-year unlimited hours, hold coverage, face-lent warranty.
Well, we've dealt with Diamond Equipment, and they're all good companies.
This one's offering $79,000 with a warranty.
Yep. And the same trade-in value.
If you don't, if you don't, when y'all get finished, I'm going to hand them to John and let him review those. Because we did talk about this today and he said, "This company is closer and probably more local they've worked with." And that wasn't, he hasn't seen these, nobody had, they were sealed. But that may be one of the differences in the...
You deal with them, you know.
When I talked to those gentlemen about getting bids, they told me on the phone that they would bid on it, but they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be able to compete with the kind of equipment. They told me that for sale.
So they don't charge you extra for the AMF and Bluetooth radio or the tilt steering wheel or the horn wheel?
Does it get air conditioning now? That's the next thing. Do they get that with it? No. It does, because I'm sure it can get hot. So, here you go. Well, it's $79,000 on this one. I'm going to let him look at that. John and Butler, do you want to look at them as well? That's, even though it's water and service, sometimes you're doing water and service, so. We multitask on our positions.
The one Diamond Equipment, I mean, they're closer, that's the thing. You need parts for it.
Yes, it is.
The turbo. The...
It's a maintenance.
So, based upon your expertise, I mean, not only knowing the people, John's gonna go turn down the heat.
Yeah.
But, uh, which one would you recommend? I mean, we know there's.
Well, like I said, the people.
Forty-five thousand difference, thirty-five.
And Diamond Equipment's just in Laverne, so if you have any problem or whatever, they can come and pick it up or, or we can go get parts or whatever.
What is the, uh, what is the age of the one we're replacing?
He said twenty-five years.
Probably thirty-year-old up in the middle. Like I said, we redid the trash fish and, uh, six, seven years ago, and it's just not worth putting any more money. And you do need to, and we have had water leak before and we had to get a, a local contractor come and help us with another backhoe.
What's, what's the age on the other one you have?
About five years old, six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six years old.
No, I'm just talking about the new one.
The new one.
Oh, oh, the new one.
I'm trying to get a sense of.
About six years old, I think.
Yeah, yeah. So, but twenty, twenty years is probably a useful service life, so if we were to buy this, we could expect it to go that long.
Right.
Well, you can expect it or expect anything, girl.
You've seen my backhoe. You know how bad mine is.
So do we need to make a motion?
Based upon your recommendation, you're saying diamonds, not only the cost difference, but also the warranty and everything that goes with that, since it is a, um, cost of seventy-nine thousand. Debbie, who last once, yeah, we need a motion in a second and then we'll do a roll call vote.
I make a motion, we go with Diamond for the seventy-nine thousand for the backhoe.
I think he told, didn't he tell us it'd be about three months before you could have ordered, two to three months, I think he said.
But is that standard? I mean, that's for all of them, right? Well, they gonna let you borrow one until then? Don't hurt to ask, you know.
Make sure you get very serious right now.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, that comes free for a year, yeah. So you made a motion?
I'll second you.
Nate said he had second.
Okay, we're gonna do roll call vote. Nate?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yes.
Jessica, yes, Jessica?
Yes.
Marla?
Yes. And that's for seventy-nine thousand, correct?
Yes.
How good without. Do you have anything else, John, that?
No, I don't.
While you're here, I know it's sort of out of order, if it's okay, if we can do this. We do have a grant that we can apply for. Most of the council's aware of it. It's an ARC grant. It would be, it's due on December the fourth, which is Friday, you know, we believe in deadlines, but it's up to five hundred thousand dollars for infrastructure. It'd only be twenty percent. John's aware of it, Butler's aware of it, Earl's aware of it, and we do need an engineer to do this. So Travis, could you come up, please? Travis is with S and M, S and M out of Murfreesboro. We did talk to a couple of different, um, engineers this week and based upon John's recommendation and just hearing them. Then we'd asked Travis to come tonight if he wanted to do a short presentation, three or four minutes, just to tell the folks where you're at and what all you've done. Then we can go in the process of, uh, hiring an engineer tonight to work with these.
Sure. Um, my name is Travis Wilson. I actually live in McMinnville, uh, civil engineer licensed in seven states, uh, on water and sewer work, uh, all over the southeast, uh, United States. Project team has, uh, plethora of experience with water, sewer, utility projects. We're located in offices, uh, throughout Tennessee. We have an office in Knoxville, Chattanooga. We're in Nashville, um, and all over the, the southeast. We have our four offices, eleven hundred employees. Uh, our project team in the, in the water business unit, uh, predominantly here in Tennessee, Lubbock in middle Tennessee. I work with a lot of small utilities, a lot of larger utilities, so I'm very familiar with, uh, small rural communities, uh, the budget constraints that exist in small rural communities. Uh, the needs that they have, um, and as well as working with larger cities, uh, and municipalities that, uh, that have larger needs. And so we're, uh, very well set to take care of both large and small, so it's, uh, I'm local. I have, uh, ten folks that live in Grum County and I'm close by. And, uh, uh, easy accessible, uh, just to run up the mountain in the hills, so, uh, I like the opportunity to, to work with, with town of Mon Eagle, if they could be good on the chain.
Jessica, I think you were the only one that didn't get to meet Travis the other day. Do you have any questions for him?
No, I don't. Thank you for telling me.
The one requirement we had, he has to meet this deadline for this pre-app by Friday, and he said he could do it. And Beth Jones was here with him, the director of southeastern development, and there's, this is just an ARC grant that we're just doing the pre-app for. It doesn't cost us anything. We have to have an engineer to work with, with, uh, John and with, with everyone, actually, and he has the background with everything we need now. So, um, do I hear a motion that we hire, uh, S, it's S and?
S and M.
S and M, so, and of course Travis is right now the point of contact that would be working with us, you know, but they have, he's had multiple folks with, could work with.
I make the motion, we hire S and M.
What are the terms we're hiring him on? Is this a, um, a retainer? Is this an hourly rate? How, how are we setting this contract up? Have we talked about that?
Well, that's what we'll have to set up, just we have to find a, a firm. On this one will be hourly, probably for this first grant application, then we'll set up a contract that is doable. What would be your?
Typically, that goes project by project and whatever the needs are, and so, uh, typically if you don't need an engineer for anything, then we don't do any work, and so you don't pay for anything. And so it's, uh, as you need assistance for engineering needs, then we would provide, uh, whatever engineering assistance based on the project or grants, uh, that, that come about. And so, uh, most of the time, we work off hourly basis and the scope of the project, we provide a proposal, uh, to the, to the town or municipality and, uh, with an estimated fee and scope and hours. And then typically that, that be approved or negotiated and then, uh, we perform that work and that, be project by project.
So that's yet to be determined. That'll be determined.
After we do this first project, because he cannot give us the amount to meet the deadline, if you know, when we discussed it the other day. If we, and we did just say that we wanted to go ahead and do the pre-app and we cannot do it without an engineer, so this firm we'd be using for that. And then we could actually, you know, negotiate project to project, as he said, whether it be ARC, whether it be CDVG. What is your average, do you know the rate of the, you know, estimated rate? We're not gonna lock you into, but I mean, you know, like, we did get a fee from the attorney, which one they have.
It depends on the, the, uh, level of engineer that is needed, and so we have, uh, engineers based on, and GIS folks, survey folks, uh, that are all billed at a different rates. And so that would depend on the need, uh, for the project, whether it be a design engineer or a CAD designer or a survey or, uh, and typically, especially for small towns. We would use junior engineers to do a lot of the heavy lifting that bill out lower rates, and then, uh, a senior engineer would oversee the work. And so that would minimize the cost for the utility. And so we could provide a rate sheet with our proposals that would indicate what the billing rates are and, and our estimate of hours for each type of project or scope of work that's, that's needed.
That, that, I was expecting something like that, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, and that's, and of course, this would be for the first projects, which would be the ARC grant, pre-app that we discussed the other day. But there's been several we have missed, and it's best said, and by the spring, there's gonna be CDVG, there's gonna be other ones that are gonna be available and probably panademic money that we can actually start negotiating once we get a firm in place.
So we're hiring now for the pre-application process for the ARC grant, and then we'll discuss terms for further engagement.
As we apply for grants and as we have needs, because John has right now, um, you said the tanks are supposed to be inspected, so there might be an issue with that. And of course, as we discussed, there's also a couple of sewer issues that we need to start addressing immediately, projects, whether it be, and as we know, we've got zoning issues that gotta be addressed, you know, that, you know.
Kind of project you do, you have to have some kind of engineer.
Sure, I'm just interested, I'm interested in the terms of engagement. It sounds like we'll, we'll get to that after this ARC grant is, is done.
So.
Okay, I make the motion, hire S and M engineer.
And I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get the app Friday in. All right, and you know to work with Beth, because Beth said she would be working with you. Okay. Thank you. Yep, and we want, we want a hundred percent turnaround on hours, okay? Not asking for much, are we? Okay. Uh, then we, uh, planning commission will be meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock. And is that what we're gonna do? We got codes enforcement here tonight, which, um, you're gonna be under that, but your codes enforcement instead. Would you please come up, Mr. Gary, and do your report?
I really have a report. Uh, I do have some business permits, probably needs to be addressed. And before we do that, I want to, uh, commend you all on your endeavor. I don't know whether congratulations or condolences. Anyway, it's good to have people that's willing to stand up and do the job they, I can do for that. I have a few business permits, uh, and I'm, I'm not sure these people have been yet to, to meet with you guys. Uh, I'll start out with Mon Eagle Nutrition. I have examined that and I approve their business permit. Fitness, uh, Studio Fitness, uh, the trade hands, that's still a hundred and R. I have, uh, reviewed that and inspected that, and I approve their business permit.
This one's not been here yet, have it? Has that one been here?
No.
Okay, definitely. Are they here or not? Oh, okay, all right, so this is, he'll go through them and then we'll call people up, okay?
Okay, uh, I have one for Cakes and Oliver's LLC, and to give y'all a rundown on that, that's the one there's a little issue about because there's two businesses that are gonna go in there with no separated firewall between the two. And what I did on that, the planning commission voted to go ahead and allow that, let, let them do that, but what I did on their business permit, I put a deadline on that, December thirty-first. Uh, and I told them, you know, if they weren't, uh, separated, just one business in there, tap tip or point nine, that, that, that has, somebody has to move that. So I'm holding that one until we get further down the road. I've got one here for Anderson Detail, and I presume that's gonna be some kind of a car, car in a cleanup deal. And I'm not really sure they did a business permit. Typically, business permits are for businesses that are stand-up businesses that people of public come in and out of, and we wanna make sure that they've got emergency lights and those things, and I'm not really sure about that. And I did try to call that number, but I didn't get a response. I have one here for.
He's on Forest Point Road.
One here from Mon Eagle Inn, that's the new owner, Richard Black. I am working with Mr. Black now. We, they're gonna do some renovations about some things, and I'm working with him on getting some life safety issues addressed. And so I think they can work that pretty well for, for that. Outside of that, that's all that I have. Does somebody have questions?
There's only one that has not appeared before the council before, correct? Because I know Mon Eagle Nutrition was here before, and so you just, and so, yeah, that's so, if they just wanna come and say what they're doing with that, and then we can go forward, because the other ones appeared before.
And not the detail guy.
Well, the detail guy's not in the city limits either, is he? Is he? Okay, so we'll just have to wait till.
So Studio Fitness is really, um, owned by Main Street Country Mark, and it's just gonna be studio space for like yoga, Pilates, any kind of studio fitness type, um, exercise. And we will, um, right now, what we're doing, we've got two large studio spaces. We also have a smaller space that could be for massage therapy or facials or something like that. And then there's a shared space for, um, reception and waiting area, sitting area, and then there's two bathrooms and some changing rooms. And, um, but we are gonna lease out to the individual exercise instructors, so they can run it on an hourly basis. So we can fill up and then post a full exercise schedule, so people can look in one place and find a full schedule. And know what kind of classes, and hopefully we'll get a good wide variety of classes, styles, and that kind of thing. It'll be an easy place to go and see everything and find the classes that you, you'll be looking for.
Yep, guys, did y'all pass that down?
Yeah.
Okay, so Earl says it's in compliance, Mon Eagle Nutrition's in compliance, every, that, that they're both in compliance, you're holding the other two correct? I mean, so do y'all wanna do them individually or do you wanna do them separately? Somebody make a motion, um.
We just need to put that one and the nutrition.
The nutrition has to be approved too, doesn't it? Or has it already been done? He has, he was here prior. I know he was here at one meeting, so I think we can go ahead and. Well, I think it was pending something, but I mean, Earl says now it's ready, so if y'all wanna approve separately, well, probably separately, here you go. I'll just hand them to you.
I make a motion to approve, uh, the permits of Studio Fitness and the Mon Eagle Nutrition.
Okay, second Doreen. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, did you have anything else? I know there's some other things that I'm gonna be asking you later, so we'll move down the list with it. Okay, now the next new business is going to be election of the vice mayor. The vice mayor's actually elected, not appointed. So do I hear, um, a motion for a vice mayor?
Uh, I'd like to nominate Doreen Parmally to be our vice mayor.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Does anyone else? Uh, so, oh, we have a second, so we'll vote, all in favor of Doreen being the vice mayor? Aye. Congratulations, Doreen. It's precious on her card, y'all. So anyway, she does this one. All right, so the next thing on the agenda is the hiring of a city attorney. We had the opportunity, Jessica, of course, you were busy that day, and, and Sam Elliott from Chattanooga came up. Sam is, been in his business for a long time, he said. He's very seasoned and so is his firm. The rate was, of course, we did discuss that across the boards, two fifty, and of course, we'll do Zoom meetings. He does not charge for those. He does it for travel, but he's comparable with all the attorneys we had with his background. They're located in McCully Avenue, Chattanooga, Tennessee. I have spoke with him a couple of things tonight, because he is very aware, and I'm just gonna go ahead and address it now. One of the reasons that we were interviewing attorneys is because everybody knows we have zoning issues. It just is what it is. We're gonna fix them and then we're gonna move forward. But he's aware of that, he's dealt with these, he's, like I said, he's seasoned in the field, so you all had the opportunity to, to meet him, you know, just in a conversation, nothing, breaking any sunshine laws because somebody was sworn in, but just to see how, you know, it was, so do we have a?
He is a very intelligent speaking man.
And so he's willing to work with us, um, for at least six months to help us, not only with the issues at hand we've got to deal with, but also with the zoning issues. Like I said, he gave us credentials of where he had worked with these issues before. Uh, I think he said, was it twenty-seven years or twenty-four years with zoning that he's worked with? But he's, he's a very seasoned attorney. So do we have a motion to? Sam Elliott, remember, he said, um, not that Sam Elliott, but remembers the.
I will make the motion to hire Sam Elliott.
Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, um, a proposal for a sound system, so we won't be holding this in a laptop. Um, would you like to come up, Janet? And I know we're doing a lot tonight, I apologize, and we came in with a bang with snow, but we've gotta, you know, take care of business and keep moving forward, so we're trying to, folks.
Hi.
Hi.
Craig couldn't be here. He asked me to do it.
Okay.
Craig Harton came up with a plan for us to have a sound system that would, each one of you would have a microphone, it would be eight wireless microphones that will be, you can put a button on to turn it on or off. The system is twelve-inch, twelve-inch microphone, or, I'm sorry. That's terrible. Twelve inch speakers. And then the microphone, there'll be a microphone here, and there'll be a microphone over there for whoever needs one, and we'll have an extra one in case we need one. And then, then we're gonna get a video system, it's a projector, that so that we can have a spot on the wall in case we have any overheads that we need. So the total, and then Craig's got some fees, he would be charging $15 per night if he were needed here, and he has an integration fee, an installation fee, and when he sets it up, so that's $400. So the total cost of the new system with the projector would be $1,745.42.
You checked on a laptop today? And the laptop will be a thousand, that you utilize it, because she'll go ahead and order that. And all this is inventoried and goes in, you know, so... So it'll be, what, $27.45, $42? But that'll set us up with the projector that you had requested, Nate, so things will be on the board for focus, and of course, when we're doing recordings live. And then, it'll also be accessible...
What budget lines does this come out of?
Probably the mayors, I don't know what budget we have, it's on his sheet, but if it needs to, it'll come out the mayors, I don't even know what we've got budgeted. But, you know, this is something we all said during this election, we were gonna be transparent, and people were gonna be able to hear. So we're trying to utilize those things in the beginning, as well as keeping more details.
And one of the things this projector is gonna be for is, one of my big complaints was the workshop, when everybody got back into the meeting and they approved an ordinance, we were sitting out there, we had no idea what that ordinance was. So, am I wrong in saying, or am I right?
Yeah, it'll be protected on the wall.
Up here, so that everybody out there will know what that ordinance is. It won't be in the dark.
Yeah, and of course, then we will read those, you know, and we'll follow the process, but they'll also have accessibility, and you can screenshot it, you know, with your phones if you want to, or, you know, you'll have, you can read it as we're going through it, so...
But it'll come out of an operational account, right?
Yes. Yes, yeah. Yes. Well, you... Yeah, it's 5,000. The reason we're doing this is because we want everyone to know if we're purchasing these things, and we said we would be doing it and set up. Now, I will say this, and you can, you know, add whatever you want to, Craig is a communication major. He does this for local churches, he does this for, in Murfreesboro, so this is actually, he has his degree in communication and broadcasting, doesn't he? And he has some...
He's working on that degree.
And, but so he has been doing this, so he's not just, you know, he knows what he's doing and setting up the sound systems. I think he did it for the Methodist Church, maybe?
This is our church, this is our church system from, and it's for out, a bigger space than here, so that's why we're having a little problem tonight. But, but he did set it up, and he's done several, he does it for bands, big bands in Nashville. He's done it at hotels in Vegas. He knows how to do sound systems and set up the videos.
And so if we want to have it ready by the next meeting, he'll be getting it up, if we go in the paribit tonight and get everything set up. And then he'll be working with us a couple of months to make sure that if we have anything that we need to, you know, problems that, and it's $50 for him to come and work with us, you know?
Will the Vice Mayor sing?
Hey, the, some of the council might. It may be the singing council, we could get ready, Nate, you're gonna lead. No, I'm just...
All of us together.
Yeah. So...
Okay, I would like to move that we follow this proposal and have the products that we need ordered, and have Craig Parton oversee this installation and the oversight.
And the total is $27.45?
Correct.
So, do we have a second? And that's Jessica, help?
I second.
Doreen seconded it. Since it's a minimum amount, do we need a recall? Or do you wanna? No, we can just do that by, since it's, you know... So, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll get started with Craig to get it ordered.
Thank you, Janet, we appreciate it. Okay, next, we did have a request to be on the agenda. That was Rusty Leonard, you have, of course, the timeframe to come up and speak, you're...
Mayor, I'm here on behalf of RBT LLC this evening. To hopefully shed some light on an issue that came up under the past administration. And with the continuing passage of time, will become more and more serious for RBT, and as a direct consequence for this town. RBT bought the property necessary for the construction of the Petro Travel Center, and I think everybody knows where that is. And when they did so, they did so in early 2020. RBT bought the subject property for $840,000 based upon, in good faith, the town of Montego's new zoning ordinance, and its 2019 zoning map. Both of which indicated that the property that they needed to give them the space for this Petro Travel Center was C3, commercial, non-residential. RBT bought the one-track, tax map 022K, Group C, parcel 14.01, that had been rezoned by the town from residential to C3, commercial. In further reliance upon the actions of the town, RBT expended another $150,000 to purchase the Petro franchise, which was absolutely necessary in order for them to go into business, to even begin construction. And expending this total of $990,000, RBT, again relying in good faith upon the C3 zoning that this city had accomplished, they changed their financial position markedly, obviously, $990,000 worth. In September of this year, the Planning Commission denied RBT's site plan, not as a result of their failure to meet all of the applicable requirements, but rather because the Planning Commission, on its own, made the determination that the 2018 and 2019 zoning maps were invalid. Based upon defects in the public notice required by the ordinance and the statutory law. Planning Commission was not so empowered. They don't have the authority of a legislative body, this board does. If the maps are incorrect, it is up to this board to make that determination, and then they make the determination as to what they intend to do about it. Go forward or go backwards. This issue needs to be examined carefully, but also quickly and concisely, to best handle any issues that might otherwise arise as a result. If you go back, you're gonna be opening Pandora's Box to a lot of other zoning issues that took place as a result of, or during the period of, this improper notice. If you go forward and basically indicate that we recognize that it was a mistake, but it was the city's mistake, and we're not gonna make those mistakes in the future, approve the site plan of RBT. Let them move forward by giving them a building permit. We avoid an awful lot of problems that we will have to trip through and run backwards. The improper denial of RBT has resulted in monthly losses to date at approximately $150,000 a month. That's over a three-month period of time. That doesn't, does include the interest, and also is projection of projected losses, as well as out-of-pocket expenditures that have to be made, cannot be made up in another way. The longer the delay, the higher the cost in RBT's losses. RBT will be looking to this town to satisfy those losses, because it has nobody else to look to. We're not pointing individual fingers at, at, at anyone. But it happened. It shouldn't have happened, but it did. And the reliance that these, these people at RBT placed upon the zoning ordinance creates a real issue. This board has the authority to decide whether to look back or look forward, attempt to clean up the mess at the expenditure of considerably more time, or to approve RBT's site plan, issue their building permit, and move forward, knowing what not to do and what to avoid in the future.
Rusty, if you don't care.
My time up?
Yeah, their time up, because we have to follow. But one thing before you leave, counsel, you've heard his presentation. Nate, do you have any questions for Rusty? And Doreen? Jessica, be, Jessica, yeah?
I will advise that there is, of course, as you know, a Chancery lawsuit currently pending in the Chancery Court from Marion County. There has been a brief file on both sides, and this has been set to be heard January the 15th, but January the 15th is two months away.
Well, and this is something I'm gonna go ahead, and we're, everybody's gonna get the opportunity to speak tonight, because there's gonna be several issues we're gonna deal with tonight to clear up some, and to move forward as quickly as we can. That's one of the reasons for hiring Sam Elliott, and the council will be aware of everything that we're doing from this point on. We do have this situation that's gotta be cleaned up, and counsel, at any time, you're welcome to speak, you know, in, in this part. We know we've gotta clean up this situation. None of us know the outcome. But pending, and I will, I'm going to paraphrase this, please make this part of the minutes, we did meet with a TML attorney this past week, and he said, pending the hearing on January the 15th, 2020, by the Chancery Court, that she would determine the outcome of how the city should pursue. Is that, and we also recorded this, so we've got a copy with that. Based upon that, of course, we had Mr. Elliott here, and he said, based upon that, we would follow that course since there's a lawsuit been filed, but said, and tell me if I'm right or wrong, but they said, on January the 15th, since it's already scheduled...
That's correct.
That they would be meeting, and they would tell us the determination to which the course that the town should follow at that point in time, since it's in the court system.
The determination probably will not be reached on January the 15th. If I know the chancellor as well as I think I do, she will take some time to weigh the situation and, and, and write a reasoned opinion. So it could be another 30 days, even up to 60 days.
Well...
That's just the reality of the nature of the business.
And counsel, of course, based upon the information we received from, of course, you have acknowledged the, the case, we're not trying to stall anything, we're just trying to make this right, because we will be addressing some other things here that we're gonna make right tonight. And then we're going to have to rescind, not this situation, because we're, we're going to have to make the entire thing right, because there's more than this error. We found out there's multiple errors, correct?
But, yeah, in this instance, we have been advised to let the chancellor look at the information and make the determination.
Make the determination.
And we will act based on that determination.
And that's based upon the, the filing of, with the courts. And we did not know this till last week, but that's what we've been told here.
And I understand, Sam is a good lawyer, I look forward to working with him if we need to. In the interim, my point was only to bring to the board's attention that the board has the power to make the determination itself, under the law.
Well, now, according to Sam, you know, that's not what I heard.
We can, we can make a determination, now whether that is the good and correct determination is subject to the interpretation of the law. So we feel like it's in our best interest to allow the judge to interpret the law for us and allow us to proceed.
And we didn't buy the suit, you know what I'm saying? And that's the reason, we're gonna be fair with RBT, we're gonna be fair with the residents, we're gonna be fair with the town of Montego. Y'all, it is, we didn't create this problem regardless of what was told or said, but we're going to fix it right, we're gonna fix it right for RBT, we're gonna fix it right, as, as right as we can for the residents. And then after this, this, well, debacle won't happen again. I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm sorry, is all I can say, it happened, but we also, and as you know, you used to sit on the council with me, we have to do what's best for Montego, and that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna protect everybody. I'm just gonna bring it to your attention, I am gonna stand up here. If you look down here, this is called Montego 2020. It was a plan that was put into place by the residents of Montego from 2014 to 2016, then, as well as a lot of other things. This is what the town should have looked like, and we even had easements from part of the property owners that we're now dealing with, with RBT, that would have had sidewalks and lighting, and we had $300,000 to do it. That didn't happen. We can't go backwards. All we can do at this point in time is fix this the best we can, and then make sure, if this council, make sure it doesn't happen to anyone else. And we found out we've got a lot of, and I'm not, I'm not blaming anyone, but we've got a lot to fix, you know?
I have a feeling that it's gonna be considerable to deal with.
And I'm just saying, it is what it is, correct? And if anyone wants to interject, they're welcome to, at this point in time, counsel, you know?
The only problem we have is the clock is ticking.
Well, and we're aware of that. I mean, we're not, we're not trying not to acknowledge that, but I'd rather it be ticking right now than explode at another point, you know what I'm saying? And we're just gonna be as fair and fix it as quick as we can, you know? And again, I understand it was ticking for a long time before us, but it just started, and we're doing this as quickly as we can.
I understand.
Now, this is something we don't wanna drag out, uh, we wanna get it going.
Yeah.
You know, whether it be drive or run, we're gonna do it, we're gonna get it going.
I appreciate this one.
So, we will have citizens heard, because nobody else called about this, I am going to address, and I'm not going to address who it was from, but there has been a request made for some information. I do wanna address part of that with TML, if the individual wants to speak, they can tonight. But one of the things they've asked for was the Planning Commission, it was an ordinance created by the Planning Commission in 1984, that no longer exists. If you have your, your codes book, in 2016, the formal council went through a purge. We went through the state of Tennessee, it took us four years to do, to condense, well, we didn't do it, MTS did it, but the state of Tennessee did it, we had to go through TCA codes. All of that information was condensed into one book. Correct me if I'm wrong, you know more terminology than I do, codes enforcement officer. Once that was done, it also had to go through the state, those records were condensed, so there's not a 1984 ordinance that exists anywhere. If you want the codes book, which you can go back to 2016, will be a reference that we'll be having to utilize, I think it's 2016, isn't it? That we'll be looking at right now. There's a dilemma with the whole codes book of 2018, that's, that we've got to fix, but we're not gonna fix it tonight, it'll be at the next meeting, I'll just be honest with you. There's, there's a lot going on here. So, that does not exist. You will be getting the information, the city recorder is working on getting all the documents as timely as she can, as being requested. There was information in, Mr. Kilgore, if you don't mind, I'm gonna bring up something that's been brought up multiple times here, so I can clarify it, if that's okay with you, Rodney? I'm gonna pass this out to the council. We did some research on a fine, there's been mention of a fine of probably, I'm, I'm just gonna throw out a number, $30,000 to $40,000 that Mr. Kilgore owed for his non-compliance. I had to do some research, we went back, there was nothing pending that had not been paid prior to this fine, and it was in, let me find the date on it, 2018, that it came up. Mr. Leonard, you're here, you represented him for this, so you can correct me at any point in time, but I did have, actually, the fine here from Mark Rain. This was sent, it says, 2/22/2018, to the city attorney. At that point in time, the city attorney was Harvey Cameron. Let me find the document. I have two letters here, I have our emails, one is from the city attorney at that point in time.
And I think that's the proper thing to do. And he agreed to do that? I'm sure there'll be people out there, no, he's not doing that, that's what he told me to do. I go along with what he told me, I believe.
Rodney, are you doing that?
Yes, ma'am. So Jessica, to answer your question, there is an ordinance, but I've, I've learned that it is not, it's not part of the zoning code. So it's a, it's a police enforcement that defines the hours of operation for a construction company, where outside of that operating time, it's considered a nuisance noise violation. But it sounds like Mr. Gary has taken care of it and working with Mr. Kilgore, and it's not an issue. Those hours are pretty liberal, except... Those hours are pretty liberal, except on the weekends. It's an nuisance noise ordinance.
And I think it's what, is it five or six o'clock? Because we've had to address that in the past. Do you have the ordinance?
I don't have it.
We'll have, well, it's, so it's in, and we will have that at the next one. But I think it's like, it's really, the reason we addressed it, if you remember, was about a garbage truck pulling behind the school somebody's house one time. But I cannot remember because they were like at three o'clock in the morning and they changed that then. But I can't tell you the timeframe, and I know weekends were involved, but that's the reason it, and where did Jack go? Jack? So we'll find out what the timeframes are with stuff. But anyhow, that has nothing to do with the way this has been held.
Rodney, I have a, there was agreement. I've absolutely, there was agreement.
So does anyone else have any questions?
Could, could you explain why it's razor thin in terms of the permit?
Okay. The ordinance calls for cutting, filling, and grading. And in construction, and everybody's going to argue with me about this, but in construction, it's my opinion from the ordinance that as long as they're just pushing some dirt around, getting some stumps out, and they may bring a little dirt in, until they get an engineer there with transit and shooting grades and actually setting grades and all that for the construction project. I don't, it's not, in my opinion, it's not in that ordinance. And when they start pulling out of transit and start shooting grades, Rodney and I, we talked about that. Then at the end, they're going to be in a violation. But it's from what they're doing right now. And a lot of the ordinance, really, the ordinance just speaks to construction of a building. And right now, they're just working on the land. Anyway, I love that interview question, I don't know.
Does anyone else have any questions concerning this matter? Do you have any questions concerning the fine that we've addressed?
So we've now got documentation that the fines were stopped being collected. We've heard from the attorney that that was because they were in compliance. So it sounds like the next step for us are to verify compliance.
Well, and we also heard that they were stopped, whether they were in compliance or not. That's what Mr. Leonard said, but Mr. Cameron has another document said that he was advised to stop. And we will have his documentation from the babbles, but the babbles we've called.
We should get it Wednesday.
Yeah, we should have it Wednesday, so we'll have it by the next meeting of that. So when it, when they were actually called and said to stop.
So it sounds like we have two outstanding questions. The first one, is the truck stopped in compliance? And it may very well be, I don't know.
Well, let me answer that one too. Because Mark Rains is the city judge that actually executed this order. I spoke with Mr. Rains, and I also attached the code that he used down here because I asked him, I said, I have a question about the code. The only part of this code that he said that was being issued shall be maintained in sanitary conditions because apparently, and this is according to Mr. Rains, and he's going to give us a document too, referring to this. He just didn't have time to get it here tonight. We'll have it at the next meeting. It will be part of the minutes. Was because apparently there was a vehicle there that had this stench to it. And so, and that's been removed. I mean, that is in compliance. So that's what Mr. Rains told me tonight. That it was that part of the code. It's seventeen dash six, and it's section thirteen dash three zero one, part two. That's the part Mr. Rains will give us, or Judge Rains will give us that.
So it sounds like there may be outstanding fines from the point of violation to the point that it was corrected and the fines were stopped? Is that something we're still considering?
That's something we'll find out. And of course, from what, and I think Mr. Leonard and I have talked about this, did we not? Mr. Leonard, we found this out that it was stopped by the town.
Yes.
Prior, that it could be like a thirty to sixty day fine. But we don't know the dates until we get the files from the babbles, which they have not got them. We called and asked for them, and they said that we'd have them Wednesday. So we'll have that by the next meeting. So we can determine from point A to point B and what the fines will be. But they're not a thirty or, one comment out was thirty thousand dollars was discussed, but there is no thirty thousand dollar fine extended. It's not there. Any other questions? And all this will be paid part of the minutes, and it will be included in when it's put online too. Anyone having anything else for Mr. Gary?
Thank you.
Okay, let's do Alderman, and then we'll do citizens' comments, then we're going to do calendar of events. So Nate, we'll start with you.
I just want to take the opportunity to thank everyone who supported me in this election. I'm excited to be up here. I hope that I will work to have earned your vote. And if you didn't vote for me last time, I hope I can earn your vote the next time around. So thank you. I'm still getting up to speed on what all the issues are, but I think we're, we're starting to plow through them.
It'll be fun.
It's already fun. And we're going to be on TV, so get ready. Wear your vest there. Jessica B.
Thank y'all for being here tonight. I know the weather's really bad, but I'm glad y'all were able to be here and hopefully y'all get home safe.
On a note of encouragement, I think everybody needs to know that there's going to be a lot of money available because of the pandemic from the government. And we're going to try to plow into as much of that money as we can get to start doing some things that need to be done with the roads and some of the, the old buildings and machinery that are around.
There's three things I'm going to bring up to you to alter, but we cannot act about them. I don't think we can because TML, Tennessee Municipal League, which is our interest company, has been called. Is it three, Deb? Okay, one is COVID. Of course, we know we're going to do as much CDC safety as we can. If you noticed tonight, you were tempted. If you've got a fever, we're going to tell you to leave. You know, we're trying to make it accessible. Same thing with parades. We're going to take as many safety measures as we can. The Constitution says I cannot make you wear a mask. I have a gator. If you want me to put it on, I'll put it on when I'm around you. But you know, we're going to do as much possible to protect our people and to protect our employees. And anything we do that'll be implemented however, when it comes to employees, since laws have changed and rules have changed and pandemic timeframes have changed, we're getting that information from TML to know how to handle the employee situation and when somebody tests as positive and when we have a situation that somebody has to be off from work. We did not get that today, but as soon as Deb gets it, she'll get it to us. The other thing, which Jessica, I know this is something that's really Jessica F. to your heart and that we will deal with later, is we're all for recycling. But I did confirm this. We do have a, and I may have the term wrong, so I apologize, a cardboard compactor at, at the recycling center. However, there is no contract on that. Now, I know that's a no-no with TML because there should be a contract with any equipment, in particular with a compactor. You have to be, and I'll ask my husband on this. I'll defer to him or Doreen, one eighteen years old, to actually utilize that. And then the current condition, we're going to have to deal with that with TML and how we address it because I'm letting you know as a council tonight, that is a liability on this town. Now, we can choose to rope it off until we get an answer of how to deal with it and set up a contract, or we can continue using it. So I'm going to give it to you as a council. How do you want to handle it? But it's just, we're a hundred percent.
How can we get it contracted so it can be used?
Well, if it can be used, TML has to tell us. And then we'd have to go into agreement with that private party to do it, and they'd have to agree to the terms that the attorney would, would have for that, so.
So how do you, how do you? Anybody that's eighteen years old, how do you patrol that?
Well, that's what I'm saying, TML. What, Deb, do you want to speak up here?
They would just come and, TML would go out and inspect it.
But I mean, if you've got somebody taking garbage out, how did you know they're eighteen years old to use that compactor?
Well, they're not supposed to be using it. It's not roped off. There might be provisions with roping it off. I don't know those answers. I'm telling you, we have notified TML, but we do not have an answer tonight. So we have two choices here. One, y'all can continue letting it, leave it open how it is because I'm for recycling, but I'm for safety first. Risk management's a key factor. But the second one is since there is no contract, we assume all the liabilities the way it currently is, period, across the board. So.
My first thought is that's a lawsuit waiting to happen.
Well, so y'all can decide if you want to.
As a citizen, we throw our boxes in like everybody's been doing. Do we have an employee that actually uses the machine? Or the gentleman that does the compacting, does it himself?
Well, see, there's no contracts there.
So, okay.
But that doesn't stop somebody.
I didn't know if the city employee was actually maintaining it and working it.
He's in the city property, so something like him, you'd be liable for him.
Yeah, the way it currently is, we're liable for that private industry if it's an employee. I'm just, this is the law, y'all. I didn't write it, and I'm not going to refer to somebody else's attorney, but he's shaking his head. Yes, I'm not an attorney, but you know, why would we create a liability with something that, that? But that's y'all's call. Y'all can make a motion if we want to.
We do not want that hanging around your neck.
Have we talked to Michael?
No, I haven't because, I mean, the thing that we'd have to do is just say we're going to rope it off immediately. Not, not, there's no contact. There was no contract, period. I think it was a verbal agreement, wasn't it? I mean, you were here. Do you know how it happened?
We voted on ordering it.
Did we pay for it?
No, I don't think so.
No, that's what I'm saying. What did we pay for, do you know? We didn't pay for the slab or something.
Did we pay for the slab?
And the three phases?
Did we?
The pieces of concrete that we did go in.
That y'all did? Okay.
So I don't know.
I thought it was all free, but.
But the thing is, is.
I mean, it's a great asset to the town, so I hate for it to be, you know, stopped.
It'd only be a temporary thing because we've got to have a contract. I'm just saying, do we want to? That's, I'm going to leave it with the council.
Because I know she likes it too.
But we've got to call TML to find out how we can protect the town.
So I'd say there are two ways we can deal with it. One, if he's a contractor, then he may have his own insurance, and he could hold us as additionally insured. We could also lease him the location. And again, he'd have to have his own insurance. But I guess I would want to reach out to him because if he's only running it once a week, we can go put a padlock on the power source and simply unlock it when he is operating it with some simple contractor agreement. And that way, we don't interrupt the service, but we also cover the town.
Well, I mean, basically, we could do that and contact him and let him know and tell him we're going to contact TML to get it done. My perspective is this, is yes, we want to recycle, but my job here is to reduce risk management and not have any more lawsuits. And most of foremost, not have somebody that could get hurt. You know, that's number one. So we'd have to come on Saturday.
So that would be the thing about talking to him. So if it's something that's got to happen every day, then that's going to be a pain in the neck that our employees don't need to take on. If it's something that happens once a week, he ought to be able to adjust to work with us and our time schedule and we get a contract or get documentation of his insurance. If he's got insurance equal to our insurance that covers his liability, then I'm going to feel a lot more comfortable about it. But in the meantime, I would say we just lock it out. But we get in touch with him immediately because I don't want him to. I feel a little responsible because I suggested that he do this because he came to me.
Well, you should have got a contract with, tell them to get a contract with TML.
I wasn't up here. I said it to the city council.
But you know what I'm saying right now? And we're not, we're not trying, and even if we could lock it out till Saturdays and let him come on Saturdays to do it, and he'll have to work with our schedule. We're not trying to stop him. But we've got, TML's got to advise us because they're the one who covers us. There'll be a lot of training and things we have to do, in particular now. And we have to go through the, well, we're going to go through the insurance company because we don't have these outstanding lawsuits. And it might not ever happen, but that one time's all it takes.
Who pays the electricity?
We do.
Does he pay the city for the cardboard?
Well, there's several issues out there that I think needs to be addressed in that. Timely things, taking it up, why is, you know, because when we started the metal recycling, we started that as a former council. They bring the container, am I not correct? They pay us for all the metal. They come and pick it up, they take it out, you know? And we actually get paid for it. But apparently, right now, it's costing us, but we're providing a service. So what.
Providing the electricity and the possibility of liability.
Yes, right now. So, but we can fix this, yes.
Is there an ongoing effort or timeline to get a contract?
As soon as we talk to TML, we'll be notifying, you know, the council suits. It could be litigations and then pursue the contract if we can. I mean, TML may say it's too high risk that they won't cover it. I don't know. I'm not, I can't speak for TML. Deb's been trying to get in touch with them, but with the holidays, and she called them how many times today? And I called once this afternoon, and they just said, leave a message and we'll get back with you. So as soon as possible. But we didn't really know this until last week when I asked her for the contract, and she said there is no contract. And I'm going to bring something else up, and I'll ask y'all what y'all think about it. I'm all for working with community. Y'all see that as we continue to go on. But we are not allowed to dump anything in Franklin County. I guess you're aware of that. But Franklin County does dump at Montego. So I don't know, but I just don't think that's too fair, folks. I mean, honestly, I think that if you're a Montego resident in that Franklin County area, yes, you should be able to dump. But if we can't dump anything in Franklin County, I don't think Franklin County residents should dump at Montego because we're just taking access. I mean, and.
That's why it stays full so much.
I mean, we're here to defend Montego. That's what we were elected for, to take care of. So that's my two cents on that. But y'all can decide what you want to do on these two issues. So since you're talking.
Well, one of the other issues was that the contractors weren't having to get dumpsters, that they were dumping the contractors' garbage there. Is that still happening?
Well, they're supposed to get dumpsters, right? But, and they're supposed. Or. Okay.
And most convenience centers for household garbage dumping.
Well, it's.
Debris from the construction site typically is put in a convenience center.
Is that being monitored? I mean, I'm asking the question.
No, I mean, you know, people remodeling and stuff, I mean, that's where it goes.
Well, we've got, how many employees that we can issue a letter and we can take it out there? Two of them saying that there's no remodeling, and then we'll have three? Do we have two? So, I mean, this is a new council. It's a new day. Do y'all want to send a letter to the employees and tell them to cease and desist immediately? I mean.
I've got another question on you Franklin County.
Yeah.
The guy that picks up all the garbage. He goes into Franklin County.
Well, I think we're going to, we need to, you know, talk to him too and say if we're not. I mean, they've got to decide. I mean, is it going to be an up a door policy? Or are we going to just, you know, how are we going to deal with that? Because I did not know till recently that Franklin County will not allow Montego residents to dump. Is that correct, Nate? You may know more. So.
Do you think we could reach out to Franklin County and see if we could make terms with them that we could use both any place?
We could reach out, but I don't think they'll do it. I mean, honestly, because. Deb, you know, John.
They don't want.
Cutting costs. But if they're cutting costs and they're increasing air costs, that makes no sense to the town of Montego to continue doing it.
I would like to sort of table this particular part of the conversation, not the compactor, but this, and let's all sit down and look at it. My understanding is that we don't actually pay for any of the trash removal, that Marion County pays for the compactor and Grundy pays for the dumpsters.
We pay for the employees.
We pay the employees.
We pay the employees, and we also, don't we pay the utilities out there? We pay the utilities out there. So we do have, it's split like two ways. Grundy County, Marion County, and, well, three ways, and Montego. So.[1693.81]
But I, I think there's, it's more of a quality of life issue for residents, and I cert, I certainly have somebody who's gone there a lot.
Oh, well, I mean, we go there.
Um, but I, so I think there's probably an issue with contractors, including contractors that pick up trash and bring it in and dump it at our facility that probably need to go to the landfill, which is what I do when I have a dump truck full of trash. But I wonder if this is something we should talk about is, and come up with a comprehensive plan rather than try to, to deal with this tonight. I don't, I know all the information.
I'm not telling you to deal with it, I'm just saying it was brought to my attention. There's been so many things brought to my attention, this is just part of the laundry list, the rest of it you get in December, you know. So, but it is something we need to address.
It's an issue, and I think we should deal with it, and I think if we come up with a comprehensive plan, we can address it sort of once and for all. And I'm, I think we take it on and come back with a proposal.
Okay, so what do we want to do about, we'll put this and we'll table this till the next meeting? Okay, and so what do we do about the compactor? How do y'all want to handle that? We are contacting T M L immediately, which is the number one thing to do, the insurance company.
I say lock it up till we hear from T M L.
Yes. Well, let's make a motion. We'll contact, we don't care to contact Michael and let him know, we're not trying, and I think his name's Michael, correct? We're not trying to prohibit something, we're just trying to protect the town while we're doing this, so.
I would like to, as part of that, reach out to him tomorrow, and I'm happy to do that, and just say, hey, this is what's happening.
I'd rather Deb do it because of T M L, let's follow the process. You can call him and tell him and that we're going to have to lock it down till we hear from T M L, and then we're going to have to sit down at the table with our attorney and come up with a contract if they allow us to do it. And hopefully expedite that as quick as possible.
Yeah, I, I would just rather him hear from us before he comes and sees it locked up.
Well, he's probably going to hear anyway, tonight we're discussing it, if he's watching FaceTime live, and we're not trying, I mean, he could have been here. I mean, we're live, dude, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to hide anything, that's the reason we're trying to be as transparent as we can. And we all have been aware of this, and again, we're not trying not to recycle, we're just trying to protect Montego and as we do more right, recycle in the, in a positive way.
As Barney would say, we're going to nip it in the bud.
All right, with their bunny, you want to make a motion? Yeah, I mean, have, how we handle it as quickly as possible, once the T M L gives us their opinion.
So.
Well, that's just like when the metal was out there and it's soaring out on the ground and then people called it off, they were making money. Now we've got the dumpster up there and they come make it up, now the city's making money. Right now it's kind of locked, we're leveling it out high, but when it goes up there, we're getting pretty good chances.
Well, that was my suggestion to the town when I sent Michael to do it, because I knew he was on it. Uh, what are we going to tell the city employees to do with the cardboard in the meantime? What are they going to tell the citizens tomorrow, starting tomorrow?
Well, here's what I think, if Michael wants to come out and empty it, is it empty now, or is it overrunning? But I'll be back in a minute. The thing is, if he can come out and empty it tomorrow and, you know, clean it out, then I'd say we lock the, the machine, right? Can we not lock the machine?
I, I was thinking about locking the power switch, it's going, it's going to probably have a place for a padlock.
Can you lock, can you lock the pad?
I think it's inside, I think it come out of the box inside.
So we can do so.
So we're in control of the power.
So we can actually say after, you know, if you can get it cleaned out tomorrow, get it cleaned out after that. I mean, I don't even know if we should do that, you know what I'm saying? Well, then let's just, I guess we have to lock it down anyhow, you know, we're going to have to just lock it down till we hear from T M L. If we're going to lock it down, we can't wait, you know, and we'll contact, she'll contact Michael immediately in the morning and as soon as we can get this worked out, you know, we'll all meet and do it, because this is an issue of litigations. Because if somebody gets hurt, we're really going to have an issue out there. And since Swanee had one, if y'all recall, and you remember what happened with the one at the university, or that Swanee had? Actually, someone, I think, died, and they removed theirs, if I'm not mistaken, that's how. I mean, it's too late after somebody, they had two.
Is it Hamilton Library?
No, no, they had one also in the middle of, they had one in, going down the main street there too at one time, because somebody got killed up.
Yeah, at the recycling.
Yeah, and so that's the reason I just totally removed it. I think it belonged to Swanee at that point in time.
I don't think it did.
So, how do y'all want to proceed with it there, Barney?
I don't want to make a motion to put a padlock on it till we hear from T M L.
Okay, stop operations.
Till, till we, so do we have a second?
Can we add to that motion that we, that we contact, reach out to Michael immediately and work with him on a solution as soon as, as soon as possible?
And she will do that, I mean, like I said, we're not trying not to work with recycling or Michael, we're just trying to protect the town, this process. So yes, can you add that caveat to that? Okay. And so we have a motion, Bundering, second by Jessica Lealot, all in favor? And of course, the COVID issue, we don't know anything till T M L gets back on that. So those are the issues that are outstanding at this point in time. Do any of the citizens want to be heard? Yes, sir?
Yeah, one comment. I think, go back to what Nate said, I think we owe y'all a round of applause, as y'all just swore an end. We ain't losing ground, no matter, if we didn't vote for you, vote for you, y'all deserve an applause.
Tony, you said you want to come up? Here's, we've got a microphone here, if you don't mind, we're recording, we let everybody know tonight we're recording it.
The only comment that I've got, based on what you said, is you made a comment there that Vice Mayor, the mayor wanted contacted Harvey Cameron unforgiving Rodney Kilgore fines. That is not correct. I have not contacted Harvey Cameron or anyone else about forgiving any fines. Those fines are still in Marion County Court. If you check your docket there, those fines are on file there.
Well, I've got a letter from the city recorder that John advised her to call Harvey and tell him to stop it.
But that he's correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but that's, well, Harvey said, that's the reason we don't have bibles. Well, I'm just saying, we are waiting on bibles, because bibles didn't give us their information, so we've tried to trace it down from.
Well, I spoke to Bible last Wednesday, and it is on the docket, the docket in Marion County. I myself have not contacted Harvey Cameron or anyone to forgive any fines, those fines are still there.
Well, that, we didn't, she couldn't remember who had told her to call Harvey and tell it, so she said the mayor, vice mayor, and I have a document here, and Harvey said that he was called and told that. Now, the bibles have not given us any information.
Well, number one, I don't think that anyone on board, any individual can call an attorney and forgive the fines for a town that's.
No, they said stop the process, is what we said.
Well, I don't know about that, but.
Well, I'm just telling you, that's the reason.
That's what me and her had talked about earlier.
We have that document.
If we vote on something to be taken care of, we voted to have the issue taken care of with Rodney. And then all of a sudden, it just disappears. Wouldn't that be something that needed to be brought up?
It would have to be brought up legally, and again, I didn't say, it said, one or the other had told her to call Harvey Cameron.
Well, I'm just going to defend myself and say I have not made a phone call and I want that documented.
Okay, and that's fine, your own hammer, and, and we're recording this, but I'm saying one or the other, because she could not remember who had told her.
Well, they need to get in touch with Harvey and find that one.
Well, we've got, well, Debbie's the one that called him, is what he said, and that's what, we got a statement from the city recorder too.
If I tell you something, you're going to remember if it was me.
Well, so would you, I mean.
I'm not going to remember if it was her or her, if it was me, then you'd remember I was the one who told you.
Well, and that's the reason we said one or the other, and that's what the information we have, which will be part of the minutes, and yours will be too.
I'm just here to defend myself.
Yeah, well, again, and the bibles have not sent us anything, and as soon as they do, we'll see what they've got.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So, there's that, but we've got these documents, and we can go from where it's at, and the bibles have sent us nothing. So that's, I'm going saga too. So any others citizens that want to be heard?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, can, will you come up here, please? I'm sorry, but people want transparency and they want to be heard, so we're all trying to be recorded.
All right, so a couple of months ago, this issue about being in compliance and going back to what Tony just said and the fines and everything, Mr. Kilgore made a statement that he was going to do the right thing to the people, but because the people were fighting against the truck stop, that was off the table. So, my question is, if he acknowledged a couple of months ago that he was not in compliance, how is that not a fine still on the table? And what is the city going to do to make him come into compliance? Are y'all just going to forgive everything and let him start a new business when he can't even complete the old business that he's not in compliance with?
All right, now, when was this documented and stated? Because we record our meetings.
Your recorder don't record half of what you're taking down.
Well, here's.
In the minutes or anything, so you can't go back to what's the city's supposed to have.
Well, I don't know what you're referring to, because I wasn't here, do you know what I'm saying?
About four, three or four months ago.
Jessica?
Yes.
I can't remember if it was county, county meeting, a council meeting or a planning commission meeting, but it was acknowledged at that time. All I want to know is, are y'all going to do anything coming forward to make that come into compliance? Or are y'all just going to screw the citizens over and leave them be, just like they've been for the last 10 years with that mess out there? With mud running out in the road, fences falling down, cars sitting everywhere, trucks broken down, sitting in the, you know. I mean, the people's got to look at that, and the city's done nothing for the people to make that a better space. The property owner's done nothing to make it a better space. So what are you going to do now as a new council to make that happen? Or are you?
People are going to be in compliance, and I can't help what was recorded and was not recorded. But if you look over here tonight, we have a DVD recording. We have, we're live recording.
I'm not the only one that heard that.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm, but again, I was not here, it's not documented.
So what are you going to do to make it come forward?
Well, we're trying to find out actually when compliance started and when it stopped, and all I can do with the documentation and this council can do, and they have a copy of it, from an attorney, from the city recorder of a process that happened. Now I'm waiting on the other attorneys to get us their documents so we can see what they have, and they have not got it to us. I even called them, and they haven't sent it to us. They said we would get them, Mr. Gillum said he spoke with him, right, last Wednesday?
Last Wednesday, I was with him on last Wednesday.
Yeah, he has not, they have not.
I spoke to him today.
She talked to him today. They said we would have it by Wednesday. So then we'll be reviewing that, and the determination will be made on what's there. Mr. Gary, while you're here, he brought up something, dirt in the road. Will you tell them what that you had issued based upon that garage when it was built, why it was gravel and dirt, please? Do you care to come to the microphone? I'm sorry, that way people can hear, I'm sorry. This is good to me.
I can remember three different times that there were issues out there that I had Rodney in the city court. The only thing the judge can do in city court is a $50 fine. If he finds you guilty and they continue with whatever is a problem, it's supposed to be $50 today. Now, I don't know where it's been from there, I know three times we were in court and the judge was sometimes giving the opportunity, and he was having, Rodney was having to turn, and he'd give him the opportunity to get it fixed and carry it over to the next court. The problem is, there are no teeth in the ordinance for any city to do to really clamp down on property maintenance issues. When you can only fine anybody a maximum of $50, that's the issue, you can not, and there's nothing we can do about that. That's statewide, that's, and if families cannot find anybody more than $50.
While you're here, Willie, you explained why there's not payment or contract there of concrete on that parking lot from years ago that the state advised you, not us.
When that, when that, when the planning commission approved the site plan out there, at that time, it didn't have to be concrete. Gravel, okay. But okay, it did back there, I know that, I remember.
Since dust free, the decision, the planning commission approved the site plan, and that, I think it was not approved.
He didn't have to have a pay driveway, gravel, okay. Well, that's been, that's been a while back, and I put gravel on it. And I'm not going to stand up here and defend anything that I've done, but the planning commission approved his site plan, and the point at that time was asked, why isn't that paid? And it didn't have to be, gravel was okay, and gravel, well.
No.
Mud, whatever.
That's another issue for us to deal with now, but when it was done, that was the law. It wasn't that somebody was slugging behind, not doing anything incorrect. Those are documented too. Deb, there should be DVDs for those meetings, correct? If you can find it in the minutes of ours, you can find the DVD, you can see that, so.
And as far as I'm concerned, and Nate, Jessica, this is our first time here, you know, give us a chance. We're going to do what I feel like is in the best interest of the city. I'm not going to not do it, but give us a chance, you know? I'm just now getting my feet wet, I don't have a clue, you know?
So, yeah, as I'll follow up, so what we've been trying to do is find out what was not in compliance, what fines were issued, and whether the problems were corrected. As of today, and really only about an hour ago, we know that there was at least one violation that occurred on this date. We have a, a signed letter from an attorney saying that he was asked not to pursue it from a certain date. So the next step for, for me and for this council is to find out is, has this been corrected? If it has been corrected, then it sounds like there may be fines due from the time that it was, this citation was issued until the time that the attorney was told to stop pursuing it. If there are others, so Earl just mentioned two other possible citations, maybe? So we need to go find out what those citations are, and we're going to do that, but it's going to take some time. We don't, and, and to, to say that there are a bunch of ongoing violations, that doesn't help me get to the details and the meat of the matter to figure out what those are, and we, we just haven't had the ability, and hopefully, Mr. Bible will have that information. We haven't yet had the ability to figure out what those violations might be and whether they've been corrected.
Uh, Jack, the man stepping in here, moment. What, last week, was it last week? Jack and the court reporter, which is now Brandy Henley, went through everything she could find with any name of Rocky Top, Rodney Kilgore. And the only thing we found went back to 2016, now this is those records there. Again, I'm not saying this is it, I'm saying we went, she went that far back, and that had went as far as court. Paul Cross was the attorney, and that had been dismissed. So you can't enforce something that, it's signed off by the judge and by the attorney. So we will find out this information, but we're not waiting on bibles to get us the information. But everybody, Mr. Man, is going to be in compliance. We're going to reduce liabilities, you know, we're going to do our best, we're going to make mistakes. And again, we're saying all we can do is buy the document, and that's the reason we record and we document, and it's going to be in our minutes too, this will be uploaded as soon as we have a person that will work with us and will continue to do so. So we're trying to fix it, and then we have another situation, I'll just go ahead, the council's aware of it. Once we get this one situation cleared up, we're going to have to go back, because the ordinances and the map are both incorrect according to our new attorney, and we're going to have to go back and address that before anything else is sold to Bob. And then we're going to have to address those in two parts. Earl's aware of that, and so are the utility workers, correct? Uh, as far as recording, this is one of the reasons, she has an audio recording, we have video recordings, and we'll have a DVD. She'll be able to utilize that.
And as far as the written minutes, the state says that all I have to record are motions. I can't record every word that's ever said in here.
And we're in the process, we're going to set up a YouTube cha, uh, channel that you can watch these if you want to all day long, you know? I mean, I'm not being ugly, but you can watch them, but that's going to take a little time, you know? And then you can go back, and if we make an error, we'll go back to this, and this is what we use as what we make any motions or compliance by. Does that answer your question, Mr. Man? Okay, um, now, on a better note, we will be having a Christmas parade on December, for December the 6th. Lineup will be at 3:45, correct? Jessica and members of the community are will be working with that, starting at 4:30. It will be, we will be following CDC's standards. We'll have one way in, one way out, one person taking pictures, everybody will be temped that actually goes to see Santa after it's done. Uh, so we're being as safe as we can. The parade will actually start at 4:30, they start now at the V F W, is that correct? And we do have a few other things, of course, some begging and some things, and the theme is country theme. If anybody wants to be involved, we're doing like the red bows and the green garlands. I think y'all picked that out a while back, so we will be having the Christmas parade on December 6th. So, uh, there is a planning commission meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. And so does the council have anything else?
Ball season starts next month, too.
January? Okay, well, ball season's starting, yes, ma'am. Okay.
I'm Mary Beth Best. I'm a Montego citizen, I live in the Colesack, just on the other side of Park. Debbie knows me by email. I am quite a pet to her, she is tremendously helpful when she and how she can be. I have asked her some impossible things, I, I realize that, but I'm trying to keep a, a record of the impossible things that shouldn't be impossible. First and foremost, thank you for your service, absolutely appreciate that, and do appreciate the, the method and the format tonight. Very different, very open, and, and really appreciate it. Um, I just want to speak on behalf of the citizens. There is so much discussion and so much support for business development indirectly talking about the RBT development. Huge, we realize that, it's huge for the city, it's, it's huge in tax revenue, it could be a great benefit to the city. Um, that's great, but they don't live here, they don't work, they don't play here, they don't breathe the air here, they get to go home. The people that are here in opposition of the location, I want to be very, very specific. We are in really strong opposition of the location of that property. It was never intended to be a truck stop that abuts a person's home, where they sit on their front porch 50 feet from an idling 18-wheeler. So, what I want to say to you is, is although we hear every meeting how much money that they're going in debt, that's, that's their problem. This is where we live, we have invested here too, we pay taxes here, we, we work. We pay taxes here, we, we work here, we, we are contributing citizens that many of us have retired here. So, we've taken this part of our lives and invested it in the city of Montegoat. And we are extremely passionate about our investment. So, R B T is not the only one that has invested in the city. There are many of us that have not taken to this microphone, that have not made a big stink and shot birds at the neighbors on bulldozers. And, you know, we're not doing those things. We are quietly in our homes, we are doing our research, and you're right. This is a mess that goes way back. And, and, and you guys, we are going to hold you accountable. We voted for you. We're glad you're there and we're grateful for your service, but you better believe it. These are citizens doing their homework, we've done our research. If you want to know something, come and ask us, because we've got research from 30 years ago. And we want to, this, we want the city to grow, we want it to grow smart, we want it to grow healthy. And we all want to grow old here, you know? We do. And we're not gonna do that by living and breathing diesel fumes for the rest of our retirement. So, you need to know upfront that we are extremely passionate and very emotional about this issue. It's our homes, it's our lives. So, we're gonna be, we're gonna be here and we're, we're gonna be represented. We're, we're, R B T's not the only one that has representation. And there's a lot of us, so you're gonna be meeting all of us. And thank you, thank you for the opportunity. And Debbie, you're saying, thanks.
And again, Mary Beth, before you step down, as, we're not saying, I mean, that's the reason we gave you the opportunity to speak. Rusty called tonight and asked to be, or not tonight, he got way back and got put on the agenda. Anyone's welcome to speak, because we want to hear it. And once we sort it out, like we said, none of us like this situation. If it had been what we had planned in 2016, as you can see, it would have never happened. But that's telling you, that's, well, if you look here, now we can show you, this is not just an imaginary hypothetical situation.
That's right.
We invested, this was you. Well, you wouldn't hear then, but this was community people, this was business people, this was employees, and this was children that put this together.
Yep.
Well, it got lost. You know what? So, we've got a situation and a map that we've got to fix. And I don't know the outcome, but we know now it's in the courts hands. And we were advised by an attorney that we feel can advise us, not only with this issue, but how to fix this from this point on.
And that's important, I appreciate that. But I'll just bring to light a couple of things y'all were asking about. The Swannie Messenger, our official recorder, recorded in March of 2018 that this was sent. May of 2018 was, that the fines were sent to change record. And then all of a sudden, they're gone. You know, you're right. Does a mayor even have authority to do that?
No, but I'm saying it happened, you know?
It happened, but it doesn't mean it was right or legal.
Well, we're gonna address that issue too.
And I'll tell you what the other issues are. It's, it's the, it's the dust free, it's in the ordinances, and it's the fence. Just go look at it. You know, the poor Nunnleys and the Munnings, I mean, they have to suffer, the Terrells. And they have come to this council over and over again and been ignored. And, and, and we got involved just by being friends with the Terrells and what they've been through and, and sitting on the Nunnley's front porch and listening to their story of what they've been through with this current business. It's horrible. Their home was built when it was all residential. And I've asked Debbie, and bless her heart, she can't find them, where are the votes? Where are the minutes, the votes that show that that residential was never changed? All of a sudden, the Nunnleys wake up and there's a, a truck service in front of them. How does that happen? And if we can't find a record of it, it didn't happen. So, then we got the mess, right? You know, we got the mess that we gotta clean up. But, um, but the other thing that we want Montegoat to do is, is you're, you're going into a business partnership. Be smart. Be, be smart and go into good business, good longevity type business. It's gonna be here forever. What you're gonna have is a pavement. You're just gonna have pavement. 10 years from now, what are we gonna have there? You know, we're, we're people committed to the city that are committed to be here for a long time. And we can't be thinking about what's six months or six years down the road. We gotta be thinking about the next generation. And this is not smart business. It's just not.
If the two violations were dust free parking lot and fence violations, do you have dates? Do you, do you know what year?
I know the Swannie Messenger, we have it's in our archives, you can look it up. It's in 2018.
2018 or early 2019, when Rusty Leonard and Mr. Kilgore walked in here and promised us they would take care of that fence. It would be clean, fixed. First, he promised that he would put black plastic across it to keep it from being see-through because that was the ordinance, it could not, you couldn't see through it, basically. And then all of a sudden, there's black plastic on some of it. And then, ten minutes later, it's tall pieces.
It's the Munn's house, it's all down.
But I stepped down that evening and Rusty Leonard promised me and Mr. Kenneth Gibson that he would make sure that he would get in compliance.
And that's in the minutes, you can see that.
And that's 2018 and 19, so if it didn't happen, this is 2020, Jessica. So, what did y'all do as a council to see it was enforced?
It's supposed to went to court. And that's where it ended.
That's where it's supposed to went to court and he's supposed to get fined $80 a day.
There's no record of it, there's no record of that.
There's no record of it in court.
There's no record of the judge.
It's recorded in the Swannie Messenger.
Well, then let me clarify something here, and we're, we're now using the Grand County Herald. Well, no, we're also using the Swannie Messenger, but it has to be a paid-for paper. If you look at the definition, that's what got them into the problems with the timeframe. It has to be a weekly paper, it has to be paid for, and there's a definition of a newspaper.
And that starts tonight?
Oh, actually, that started this past week. I mean, the messenger can still, we're still gonna utilize the.
But they're not the official recorder anymore.
I didn't know they were ever the official recorder. Debbie, did y'all make them the official recorder? Jessica?
I don't remember that.
I'm not aware of it, so I don't know where that came from.
I don't know, I mean, she's just here to report.
She reports for the news, and we want all the, we've got G C T V.
That's told to me by the council, I, I don't, I didn't make that.
I don't know, I wasn't here.
Yeah, she's always here.
You've been here for four years.
She's always.
But did you know they were an official recorder for the town?
I have no idea.
So, I have, I don't know.
Grand County's the official recorder, that's.
Well, they're not a recorder. Any public miss meetings will be in there from now on that is paid for because that's what the law requires. They're weekly and they're paid for, and that is a definition of a newspaper when you run a public notice.
Okay, that's fine, but is, does that mean that what they reported in 2018 wasn't?
No, that's not saying that. I'm just saying, I don't know where that, there's no paper is the official recorder. The official recorder is going to be this right here. The documentation that we'll be doing from now, G C T V is going into a contract with us not only to provide us with coverage Thursday through Saturdays or Sundays, Stephen's working on that. Also to provide us with a DVD that we can keep as our own records.
But those are the, those are the records that keep us accountable to the voters, which is different from the records that make, that force R B T to be accountable to the court, the clerk, and the judge. And, and they're two separate things. And so, if, if there were outstanding violations, they should have gone before the court. We haven't yet been able to find them in the court.
Right.
So, maybe, maybe it was verbal at a city council meeting that they were told they would get in compliance. But that's, that's different from an actual admission of violation within the court of law.
And that violation that you said was big, the stinky truck, I know all about that.
Well, all I know is what.
It cleaned up the stinky truck, but that wasn't what the real issues were. And the, the other issues were longer, bigger issues.
And Judge Rains is sending us a document because he's the one that sent the violation down. He spoke to us tonight, he'll give us something in writing for the next meeting. All we can do is go back to the people that did this.
Right.
Because there's no record we can find. I mean, I'm not saying it wasn't done, there is notes and notations, but there's no recording? We can't find that? So, we gotta repiece these things and see where we're at today.
Right, but you bring it to current date and like Nate said, you verify.
That's it, that's what we're trying to do.
You verify, you know, you just verify that he's in compliance, and if he isn't, then it's your job now.
Yeah, if there isn't, we can issue, we can issue new citations and we can get that process rolling. But we've, we've got to sort of figure out what, what has happened.
Right.
And we'll be dealing with those things as they're reported now. I mean, that's the reason we have a coast enforcement officer, the police will be dealing with it. So, but right now, we're, we're doing it as quickly as we can.
Well, we, one other thing I'll say before I leave the platform is we are not, those of us that live here do not care if this is a rush job. As a matter of fact, it's the opposite. Please be in careful prayer and consideration of all of the documentation, of all of the history, of all of those involved. Not just get your eye on the prize of big tax revenue because that is, that is short-lived. We're looking, please, we beg of you, take your time, be careful, be considerate of everything involved. And there are so many issues around this. So, I understand they want to rush, but if you rush it, you might miss something. Just do the due process and be careful.
We're not rushing, what I'm saying, we're dealing with it as finding this information, going back to the sources, putting it together. We're not gonna pigsmill it, you know? That's not how we work. We work on facts.
Great.
Facts are not rumors, rumors don't work. There's a lot of those out there, so we're gonna be fair to the town of Montegoat because we're here to represent the town of Montegoat. Whether it be with R B T or it be a trash compactor or it be a parade, and that's what we're gonna try to do.
Or just little rural folks that live here.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, if it's, well, that's what I'm saying, residents, I mean, that, that's the most important. You've got the town, you've got the residents, you've got the businesses, you've got the employees, and you've got the future. And again, that has always been our plan. And hopefully, we can get these things resolved as quick as possible.
Truly, truly sincere and grateful for your service because we know you gotta be doing it because you love it, because, um.
Yeah, because.
Not a lot of other been a bit, I'm sure.
Oh, no, it's not.
Especially here in the neighborhood. But we do appreciate it. It's just a project, and going back and, and looking at the history of it because, because it is a big tangled mess, it needs a lot of, a lot of help getting it untangled.
Well, now this will be even yours, you know, everything will be documented. If you've got anything you want to submit, we'll make it part of the minute, and it'll be there.
I appreciate that, I appreciate.
Just get it to us.[1769.25]